Okay, if I could have your attention. We're here. Gosh, we've had like three weeks off of meetings. How fun is that?
No.
Something like that. Isn't that nice? Other than planning commission.
You just get stale.
You just get stale.
Yeah, right.
I've missed you all so much.
I got two.
Okay, this is the Tuesday, September 14th work session. I'm gonna call that order. Item number two with our comments and citizens on issues that are not on the agenda. So that if you have something you would like to say to this board that's not on the agenda, we'd be glad to take that now. If you're here on a particular item, wait till that item comes up and we will recognize you. So having not seen anybody standing up, I'm gonna go on to item number three, flood mitigation report from Mr. Stuckey.
I will give you just a quick update on two areas related to flood response and flood mitigation. The first is just an update on our submissions that we've been making to FEMA for various costs that were incurred in terms of the flood response and flood damage. And we've continued to submit those and to date, we've submitted about 372,000 worth of reimbursements, whether it's damage or costs of response and recovery. With the modified match that has been approved by FEMA and the state's participation, which is now 90 percent from the federal government and 10 percent from the local and state, with the city and the state each doing 5 percent. That puts our match at around $18,000 for that $372,000 worth of costs that we have submitted for payment at this point. We estimate that we're about 75 percent through that process. We'll continue to work through that with departments. And, you know, there are a few areas that we are gonna continue to push through and work to get those with FEMA and bring that to a closure. I want to recognize the great cooperation we've had across the organization, but especially the coordination that Assistant Fire Chief Todd Horton has provided to us and helping coordinate all of this and working with departments as well as coordinating these responses with FEMA. The next piece I want to touch base with you on is our hazard mitigation grant program. And we discussed this at last meeting and I just wanted to put this one slide up on the screen and talk about the timing of this process as we envision it. And we talked about it last time. This is, again, a voluntary program, a grant program through which the city submits a grant application to the state and the state then applies on our behalf to FEMA for these mitigation dollars. And this operates on a 75-25 percent match basis with 75 percent being the grant and 25 percent coming locally. And this, again, is voluntary. And then we would determine as we do this what properties we think best fit this and we'll pass muster with the grant review process, which has essentially a cost-benefit analysis that goes along and says, "It makes sense to purchase this property from a long-term mitigation standpoint and cost in terms of recovery and response that's required." And so the timeline that we have up on the screen is what will be our public process. We will kick it off in about a week on September 22nd in this room at City Hall. At 6 o'clock, we'll have a public meeting to explain the program. It'll be a lot of what we covered with you three weeks ago where we talked about what the program is, what the general priorities are, which, again, are focused on the significantly damaged or substantially damaged properties located in the floodplain. There may be other properties within the floodplain that are kind of in that second tier of priority that we will also consider. But it is a process that's open to all to submit letters of interest for consideration for the grant program. So that day, that September 22nd, we'll launch that process. We'll have a little over 30 days for citizens to submit letters of interest and we'll have a form. The form is actually on our website now. And they have until October 25th to submit those. And then we'll start reviewing those over the next couple of months to determine what we think fits appropriately in a city grant application through the state.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, September 22nd. We have a page up on our website now. If you go to the homepage, you'll see in our highlighted area on the left-hand side, the news items, you'll see an item on the hazard mitigation program and this timeline, a letter explaining it, a fact sheet are all on there, and the form for folks to initially express interest is on there as well. So all that will be distributed at this meeting and then we'll have this 30-plus day period for people to submit their letters of interest and then we'll go into the review process. We do not expect funding to be determined by the federal government until the end of the year. And that's just our best guess at when that funding will be determined. And then from there, the TIMA application process will open up, which we expect to be a two-to-three-month application process from there. So we're trying to be in front of it and really by the end of the year, have a good handle on what we think is an appropriate grant application for the city. And then when the funding is announced and TIMA announces exactly how their timing and how they're gonna handle their local grant program, we've pretty well got a handle on that. So from there, it will take the better part of two years plus to work through the rest of it, which is the approval and the review and contracting that we all go through. And then we'll go through the setting of closing dates on the properties that are identified. And, again, it's voluntary. So the homeowner will choose up until the day of closing to decide if they really want to participate in this program. It's not quite the same for the city. Once we've submitted the grant application, we are committed to that. So we just need to know that when we bring this back to you in a few months, that is sort of the line that we cross that we're in the program at that point in terms of submitting those properties or whatever properties we think make sense for us. So that's really an overview of that process. And in the next week, we'll launch it publicly and have that open for folks to identify their own interest in participating in this grant program.
75-25.
75-25. 75 coming from the federal grant. And the 25 would be all local. The state is not participating in that 25 percent with us. That's our number.
When you say the city is committed once we have indicated our interest, does that mean that we're committed to purchase every property that someone submits? Or do we have to pick from the, say, the list, a priority listing?
Well, you're not obligated to submit what is given to you in terms of letters of interest. When your obligation is, is when you submit that grant to TIMA, which says, "We've got these 10 properties that we think fit the benefit-cost analysis and are appropriate for this grant program as we understand it." At that point, you've really committed that those are the properties you wish to purchase. The way TIMA sort of works this is with the review that we would likely go through with them, we've submitted it with a pretty good sense that they're good candidates for grant funding at that point because of the kind of review that we go through with them in getting there. But that's, the city reserves the right to determine what's the appropriate properties to bring forward in the grant program. It's open for folks to submit, but looking at the priorities and the cost related to those properties and the benefit in terms of mitigation is what's gonna drive that and ultimately the determination that you make about what properties you submit. So that's the city's call about what we submit in the grant program.
So would you determine who's el-- I know you've said it. Would you determine who's eligible and we've got 25 percent exposure?
Yeah, you've got that cost in terms of the purchase and then you've got the ongoing maintenance costs after that as fully a local cost.
And that's different from the state doing half and we end up--
This is a different grant program than the FEMA reimbursements that we are receiving now on the 90-10 basis that's more of a flood response. This is a separate grant program related to the purchase of property and ultimately hazard mitigation.
You said that if a homeowner at closing decided not to follow through, we don't have any exposure in that situation, do we?
We just, just our time and effort up to that point. No, we don't have any financial obligation because they've chosen not to participate. So we don't need to put in our match to purchase it anymore.
So if we had 30 applications, we determine 10. We got 20 possibly aggravated individuals.
But those are also ones that you need to be able to justify that you believe can meet the benefit-cost analysis that FEMA is gonna put it through. And it's primarily focused on kind of the priorities we laid out last time, which is substantially damaged, which is 50 percent or more, and in the floodplain. That's what this program is primarily geared towards. Now, we can make the case for ones that may fall short of that substantially damaged threshold and there's their ways to approach that if that makes sense to us from a strategic flood mitigation standpoint. But the program is really geared more towards that and you've got a higher degree of, you've really got a, if it doesn't meet those two initial priorities, you've got to really show why it makes sense from a cost avoidance standpoint and a benefit standpoint.
What was the number that we determined or has it not probably been determined 50 percent or more?
About 10 to 12.
Was it 10?
Are you tired of telling us the same thing?
It's always good to keep checking because we've had an open door policy on this all along.
No, I'm not into that.
And it's been right about there, but--
There's many more, yeah.
But there have been adjustments along the way because people do come forward and say, "The repair is less" or "The repair is more," "The value of the home is more or less." And we've always looked at, you know, costs or justification they can bring forward, whether it's an appraisal or a cost estimate from a licensed contractor that shows the cost of repair. So that's always been something we've worked with people on in terms of look at their--
So it would have to be 50 percent or more and it has to be in the floodplain?
That is our, that's what I would call priority one. Now, priority two is properties that fall maybe short of that substantially damaged but are in the floodplain. And may make sense to take in from a mitigation standpoint because they're adjacent to properties that are substantially damaged or they're adjacent to existing open space or there's some way that it helps us do future flood mitigation.
So wouldn't it be able to help some but not all?
I think that's a reasonable expectation.
And I think that's sort of the mindset--
And we're gonna prioritize the most impacted in the floodplain first and work our way down from there.
So would anybody be eligible if they weren't in the floodplain? If they were in the flood fringe, they would not?
We would have to look at that. I wouldn't say, I would not say definitively no, but we would have to still pass this. All of it's based on passing a benefit-cost analysis because FEMA needs to justify that spending this money now avoids greater costs later. And if we can demonstrate that, then it's, it has a chance to participate in the program.
And then we have to take that 25 percent times whatever, pull that out of the air somewhere.
And that's gonna be what we look at is, is that, you know, is that a level investment we want to make to help address these issues long-term?
And the process of appraisal is the same as the other processes of appraisal?
Yeah, we'll ultimately do appraisals for those that we identify in the grant as good grant participants.
Okay, thanks. At request of Dana, who's gotta get somewhere, I'd like to take 14, 15, and 16 and then possibly 17 out of order. And then also, since we've got some people here on London Lane, which is 19, and they've been here like three times and we haven't had a chance to hear them, that we make sure we can get to it this time. And there's no objection. So item number, item number 14 is considerations of alignment of Carlisle Lane West, option number three, and the design of Carlisle Lane and sign project highly nice. As you all know, this was on the agenda last time and we deferred it back from BOMA mainly because of item number 16. So we felt like we would hear them, maybe put them all together and come up with one sort of solution. So we wanna start with that, maybe give a history, not a history. Don't do that. In fact, someone asked to do that the other day and I told them they couldn't.
That's an overview.
So maybe a brief summary of where we are.
We've got three items. You have the alignment, you've got the landscaping, and you've got the retaining wall. The alignment was driven by some requests to look at some different alignments. We had a couple of public meetings, developed some options. And option three is the one that seemed to be acceptable to the neighbors, or the Carlisle neighborhood.
All of them.
And, yeah, as well as, rather blank on the property owner.
Mr. Fort.
Yes, so they all seem to come to agreement that that was a good alignment. The only additional cost associated with that is about $13,000 or $14,000 of additional design.
I wanna say it was about $15,000 for design, but easements and right-of-way may change. We don't know that until that actually gets done. We do think that the Thomas and Ford property is a little more expensive, so there's probably some additional cost for right-of-way.
So the only known part is the design cost. We don't know right-of-way will still be determined, but, and that's what came through with the capital investment committee is to move forward with option three on the alignment.
Yeah, there was, for 14, it was, the recommendation was to approve. For 15, it was likewise to approve. And 16 came forward with no recommendation, one way or the other. 15 was, the advantage to 14 is it moves the center line and the edge of the road slightly off of the common area for the subdivision. And that was something that they had asked for. And after talking with Mr. Fort, they, everybody seemed to have agreed to that. 15 was more or less landscaping to be done in the common area, right, common area, and then maintained by the HOA. As I understood it, it was basically putting in landscaping and turning it over.
There's one additional clarification on that one that I didn't understand at the time that I want to make sure everybody else does. And maybe I just missed it, but the existing landscaping that's there will not be impacted? Is that correct?
Even home, and so there's some question from staff is, "What are we talking about as far as landscaping?" Because there's a lot of landscaping there already. So, no, I mean, we're not touching on landscaping.
Even in the construction easement?
Especially if we shifted.
Why, is it because it sits back too far?
Yeah, I mean, it's--
It's further away?
Yeah.
All right. So why is that on?
The original, the original alignment, the original alignment got into a little bit of landscaping and we were, we had planned to replace what we, what we removed if there was any that was replaced or removed. But then they requested more landscaping and it's never been, it's never been stated what more is.
I think there's people in front of me right here.
Yeah, they want to come up.
Do they want to find more?
You gotta come up and talk.
Yep, there you go. There's three of them. Two of them, one of them.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Say your name.
Hey, my name is Ron Franks. I'm the president of the Carlisle Home Association. And just speaking on behalf of all the neighbors in the subdivision, I know the question regarding landscaping, a lot of all of this, both with the retaining wall as well, has to do with noise abatement. Obviously, the neighbors in the front have had some great concern about the impact of this whole project. And obviously, a lot of the discussion we've had getting the road shifted over to the Ford property has satisfied a great deal of those concerns. But the biggest question now that remains is gonna be the noise impact with cars that are actually stopped and idling. There's been some discussion of, you know, trucks having to slow down and things along those lines. So the retaining wall certainly abates a lot of noise. I think that's evident by the 440 interchange in the Nashville area of how they approached that years ago. And the landscaping, once again, as it continues to mature, will help satisfy that concern as well on that particular corner. And it's, you know, there's certainly a lot of traffic there right now and we believe that the traffic will probably increase just due to the convenience of being able to make that turn on that corner.
Do we have a, and you said you, we don't have, do we have a description and a cost of that landscaping or we don't have that yet?
No, we do not.
We would just be incorporating that further into the design.
And is that--
Right, there really hasn't been a specific landscape plan. I think there had been some general discussion that, you know, maybe if there was some sum of money or something, we could go back to our landscapers and have them put a plan together. But I guess before we put an expense to that regard, we needed to make sure the alignment of the road was over far enough because at one point, it was really getting into a lot of the existing landscaping and actually some of the landscape retaining walls that are already there on property.
But if the alignment has now been shifted to where the only, the only plant disturbance that's gonna occur is grass, is that my understanding? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct based on--
If that's true, then, I mean, are you thinking trees or, I mean--
Well, Bill, you had been committee chair of this and so you had had a lot of discussion.
Along the, along the Carlisle Lane, there are, from the intersection of 96 and Carlisle Back toward the north, there are probably five or six homes that are built along Carlisle Lane. The landscaping in front of those houses that face Carlisle Lane is pretty sparse. It has some small shrubs and retaining wall and some fencing. Those, those folks that live in those homes along Carlisle Lane that face Carlisle Lane would like some buffer along that line, along that street to afford them some protection against the sound abatement, the sound that occurs when you drive cars along a street. And their concern was the roads to be moved closer to their property. And with this readjustment and alignment, it's still gonna come toward, toward their homes. It's not, it's not gonna stay where it is today. There'll be some adjustment in where the road that they built, new road that they built. Their concern is they'd like additional landscaping along Carlisle Lane.
Bill, did they talk about maybe pine tree, something that's larger than bushes or something like that a catch?
As we have right now, those are small shrubs that are three, two to five feet tall.
Well, I mean, 'cause as, in my mind's eye, I don't see anything that today, and I'm preface it by saying, I want to do this project correctly and abate to the extent that we can any negative impacts upon all the stakeholders out there. That said, in my mind's eye, and I go down there quite a bit, I don't think there, I don't, I'm not aware of anything there that would be that kind of sound buffer today, even if you let it grow. So if what you're asking for is sort of a visual screen type thing as well, then, if that's what you're, I mean, because a pine tree row is gonna, is gonna create a visual impact, if that's what you're asking for, okay, but let's be clear. And you might want to, I mean, unless you know, you might want to double-check that because I could see doing pine trees also on 96 if that would help. But that's a significantly different deal because now you're talking about visual screening as well. And--
Well, the Carlisle Lane issue is going to be a visual issue. And the 96 proper, the roadway along 96 is what we're asking for, a retaining wall, is a completely different issue. I think in appearance, the move of our subdivision would be changed completely by just planting trees and doing a five or 16-point break, whatever's required. We prefer to say the retaining wall is there because the aesthetics and the way that you guys like through our city, it should, should be complement what's been done in other parts of the city.
Okay, this item is not on the voting portion of tonight's meeting. I'm, I'll basically support what the homeowners come to me and ask me for what they want, but I may not, may not get enough votes to bring it to you, particularly when you start talking about a retaining wall that's a little more expensive. If you guys could get some clarification from me about what, you know, do you, do you want or would you take as an alternative, something that might be landscaping and visual screening, that would be helpful for me or between now and then.
Well, we've discussed this with the city engineers and they're, they have not been able to give us a specific height of the, and have not given us any kind of specific, specific design for that retaining wall. So we're kinda left out of the hole as to where we are as what you, what is the city proposing. So, but we have suggested that, that a smaller size height wall could be, could be done and, and it would save the city some money. And the cost of the retaining wall, the estimated cost of the retaining wall was somewhere in the neighborhood of over $100,000. And our community information was less than that.
How much less?
Probably 25, 30,000.
Jeez, we could see that. It's kind of a retaining wall we talk about.
The whole project is somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million. This, this retaining wall cost is less than 10 percent of overall cost of the whole project.
And the retaining wall, the, for the board's information, the retaining wall, if you, I don't know if you can picture this, but there's, there is now a rock outcropping, a natural formation there. And what, the way I've understood it is the, the neighbors are asking that we sort of, because we're gonna have to take that down to do this project. That's gonna get, that's gonna get graded out or drilled out or blasted out or whatever. The neighbors, as I understand it, are sort of asking for something that would kind of replicate that effect in the, on that, on that corner, which I think is a reasonable request. It does have some expense to it and it does, it does add to a $2 million project, but it's not, the reason is to replicate the effect of that natural outcropping that is there that will be gone. And I can understand the neighborhood's position that taking that out and then grading it three to one and throwing grass seed out there is, is not going to be the best sort of remedy for, for them.
Well, and I also think the net cost of the retaining wall, there is a gas line that would have to be relocated. I don't know of all the impact. I know that some of that's been taken into account, but, you know, if you don't put the retaining wall, you have to relocate a gas line. So in order to really look at what the real effective cost is for the retaining wall, you've gotta look at the whole project. And there, again, you know, I'd have to look at the city engineers to get into that detail. It's just on the surface would appear that, you know, it's not just cut and dry, it's the cost of the wall.
I'd like to sort of, we got so many unknowns here that's kinda hard to, to make that decision. Can we maybe suggest that we maybe go forward with some kind of a design, both of a wall and landscaping, and then figure out really where we are and what that's gonna do? Does that make sense to do?
Yeah, I mean, do you know whether, I mean, for example, do you know, does the staff know whether or not we could avoid relocating a gas line?
Gas line relocation should not be any cost to us. It's in existing right-of-way, so it'd be utilities cost. So that's really something that's, it's probably gonna have to be done regardless. I'm not sure exactly where it's located, but you, and, you know, I guess, I guess we need some clarification. We're talking about a retaining wall, we're talking about a wall for sound abatement. Retaining wall's necessarily, not necessarily a sound abatement wall. Sound travels basically in a straight line, so the height of the hill creates some sound abatement itself. I don't know what landscaping you can really do that's gonna sound abate.
Let me know.
Landscape requires a lot of sound.
There's a little bit, but the main thing on landscaping to be able to get sound abatement is retaining, or is--
abatement is retaining, or is, is berms, et cetera. There are no berms that I'm aware of out there. So that's basically, a berm is basically the hill you already got. So, but this, this, we're not touching the landscaping. The landscaping is what was approved and required by the planning, your, your standards, et cetera.
Originally.
Originally, and anyway, we'll, we'll do what you want to do. We can, we can have somebody come in and design what's best landscaping wise for whatever sound abatement we can obtain out there. Unless you put up a sound wall, I do not, I would urge you, do not consider a retaining wall that's going to be doing sound abatement. The hill itself will do that. I mean, because that's all you're doing is just making a straight up, straight uphill versus a sloped hill.
Well, the problem I see with the issue is this, when you widen 96 and add another lane, and then you add another multi-use path in there, you're ultimately taking the current hill that you have there now as a, as an abatement, a sound abatement, and removing that, and then sloping that, the remaining land that's in the right of way in 96, sloping it up to our property land at a three to one. And you'll, you may even encroach on our current landscaping of pine trees that front the property, that front the subdivision. And that creates a lot more noise than what is there now. And that's our concern, is that we're going to get a lot more noise than what is existing today. Existing today is a lot different than what you proposed in improvements on the city.
And again, I want to point out that we keep talking about existing right of way. We're not getting any additional right of way.
Does the, does the top, does the top of that hill change?
No.
Before and after the project?
No.
Okay, so the-
The barrier of what is there now, the only thing that would change is vertically versus a slope. It's still going to be, it's still going to be the same height. There's plenty of landscaping there now along 96. Larry, myself, the land department, he's been working with, with the HOA, trying to release their, he's looked at this too. There's not really anywhere to put a lot of landscaping on 96 especially. There's large trees, or there will be once the pines mature. So there's really not anywhere to put a lot of landscaping. I think if you want trees that are going to possibly spring more.
I think from a homeowner's standpoint, you know, I believe the retaining wall is probably a more important factor in this. And part of it is that our long range plans would be to augment the landscaping's there. And if we've got a retaining wall that we can then put additional landscaping between there and the trees, you know, now we can certainly put it on the slope that's left, but that will help, you know, with sound, aesthetics and things of that nature. Because, I mean, I think we've been pretty good neighbors in the city of Franklin to maintain that and keep that aesthetically pleasing, but certainly cutting that bank off. And, and you know, you're adding an eight foot walking path, curb and everything. I mean, it's probably in the existing right of way, but I can tell you based on where it's staked out, which if anybody wants to come out there and look, it will be what's currently now a green space from edge of pavement. There'll be probably, what, three feet to eight feet, you're talking eleven or twelve feet that will not be green space anymore. It'll be asphalt curb, a little grain of grass. So yes, it is in the existing right of way, a big part of it, but aesthetically will make a major difference to that, you know, roadway going by that area there.
And I do want to point out that landscaping between what we're talking about retaining wall and existing landscaping they have would be in right of way, not sure it's, would be approvable by T-Dot. It is T-Dot's right of way, and it's of course always subject to be taken out at T-Dot's discretion. So-
We understand that. Right. I mean, we've got irrigation out in that area and other landscaping. I believe it actually may be in some of that.
Can we, I'm trying to move this along. We're not going very far past, so-
Can I make a suggestion?
You can. I was going to make one, but you go right ahead.
I would suggest that, all right, my, my understanding from the feeling is we do want to go with option three alignment. Okay, we go with that.
We still haven't heard estimates on the, what the right of way's going to cost on the Ford property.
We would not know that until we get a design, at least a preliminary design, knowing how much right of way we'll have to take from Mr. Ford.
We expect it to be a pretty small piece of right of way.
I think right now we're looking, I think right now we're looking at a cost of around six thousand dollars for right of way if we stay where we are. But we will not know what that cost is until we have at least a preliminary design. We can bring it back to you at that time with an estimate. But I would suggest, again, is that it, I don't want to cut you off. I would suggest that we do the, go on and, you know, say we're going to do the option three alignment, that we do have our consultant look at having, and this is going to be additional cost, look at the, any sound abatement landscaping that could be possible. And this is going to be some preliminary work initially. Before it gets to a final point, we'll bring it back to the board again to where we, because we need to have some cost, et cetera. Now, that's, as far as those two items, I would, I would suggest that we go forward. In that manner, you may want to discuss this wall stuff.
Well, can't you do, can we do, can we do a preliminary design on that and get a, get a bid alternate on both landscaping and the wall and, and have somebody tell us, you know, so that we can know that we're looking at?
We could.
To me, that, I don't know how we can do anything else but do that without knowing the cost and that. So I think we agree that three is the option. Let's, let's get, I mean, I think we do. I mean, that's kind of what, that's good sense. So let's do that. Let's, let's get some preliminary designs and some costs. And then let's bring that back and vote on that with those options so that we know what we're looking at. Is that all right?
And it is, it is right that the money for this is, has not been approved for, for the construction. And so it's really, the timeframe-
Right.
-is not as tight as it might be in some other cases.
Correct. I agree with that. All right. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, seventeen, given the direction we just got, would be appropriate to withdraw number seventeen and we move on, work on the new design. And that may, we may ultimately need to come back to you on something like this, but this was based on the original design.
Okay.
So we just need, we'll need to withdraw that.
We're gonna go, is anybody here for the Evan Street and Lewisburg Park? Is anybody here for that?
Yes.
We are, okay. Well, let's do that and then let's do-
What number's that?
Eighteen and then nineteen.
Eighteen, oh.
Because they're, they're similar, but yet different. So let's do eighteen, which is consideration, and listen, I'll probably get, I'll probably get so screwed up later on what we're going to do afterwards.
We'll keep you straight.
Try to keep me straight. Eighteen is consideration request to abandon a portion of the public right of way for the alley between eight seventeen Evan Street and one oh eight Lewisburg Park.
Both these are situations that are similar to the policy we talked to you about a couple months ago in terms of how we deal with right of way that is abandoned and that we have a potential alternative use for, or neighboring properties would like to see us look at, you know, providing that property to them in the process for doing that. So Kelly and Eric have kind of taken the framework that we gave you and discussed with you and seem to have general consensus around.
Well, now wait, just, let's don't say that.
We didn't make objections when we brought it to you.
Wait, some of us did, some of us did. Yes, some of us did have concerns about-
They were talking about-
If there were any conclusions drawn.
I don't think there were any conclusions though.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
We've applied the framework we gave you a couple of months ago to real life examples.
Yeah.
And so that's why we're bringing it forward to you now.
We have not drawn any conclusions from that, though, is my understanding.
Well, all the framework is, is to provide you with information to make decisions. It doesn't predetermine your decision.
Yeah, and we didn't vote on the policy.
We did not vote on the policy.
No, there's no policy.
Yeah, we take it case by case and we said, this is the kind of information we think is going to be helpful to facilitate that decision. And we basically said to you, do you think that this would be helpful to you in making those decisions? Again, not predetermining that decision, but that's saying this is a framework that's helpful in getting there. So we've applied that framework to these specific examples and want to bring that forward now.
All right.
Generally speaking.
Having said that.
Cetera, cetera.
So let's start with the, with this one. The right of way on-
Between Evan and Lewisburg.
Eric or Kelly, I don't know who's on the bottom of it.
Well, this came up almost, almost a year and a half ago, I believe, which actually it started on the other end of this alley. Property owner had a tree that was dying. She asked to, asked for it to be removed. It's in our right of way. We ended up, we ended up, we ended up removing it at that time. We did look at the possibility of abandoning the right of way, but I think there was some disagreements among the adjacent property owners. Some wanted it, some didn't. At the time, the board wanted to get more of a consensus. We removed the tree and it basically kind of dropped. The issue dropped because I think the property owner was satisfied that the tree was no longer a threat to fall and damage her property or her house. So, but this is, has been brought up again. The property, one oh eight Lewisburg, they would, they would like to be able to subdivide their property based on our zoning ordinance. They actually need just a slight amount larger to be able to, to meet the zoning ordinance as far as the size to be able to subdivide. What they've asked, what they would like to see is the alley subdivided. And rather than it be split fifty-fifty between them and the adjacent property owner, they've worked out an agreement with eight seventeen Evan Street and they are here. Actually, one of them is a city employee. But they've, they've agreed basically that one oh eight will take all of the right of way if we abandon it. It's common between them. That will give one oh eight enough property to be able to subdivide to meet the zoning ordinance. In return, they will grant an access easement. And really for, for the houses, that's the property owner, they won't have, they won't have any effect. They've got a driveway that's within the existing right of way. All that's really going to change is from a, from right of way to an easement. So there will be no, no change to them. But as far as the, as far as the policies, we tried to match the real life example to what the policy was set up at. Got any questions?
On this map here, I was going to say, you have the map here, but we don't have the addresses, so.
It's the Joel Crosby property that's on our way? Yes. It's the longest-
Yeah, the picture for that gives you a clearer view.
This is the right, this is the alley right here. It really goes all the way around. It goes all the way around.
The longest rectangular-
You're just, you're just talking about one leg.
Well, that, you know, the, I mean, I think the whole thing, I mean, it'd be a benefit to the city for the whole thing to be abandoned. It's not, it's not used by the city-
It's not usable.
...right of way.
I understand who would get the, who would get the alley, this, this portion of it, but who gets, who gets the rest of it?
Well, in what we've brought before you, we're not, we're not letting anyone do that. Like I said, I would, I think it'd be in the city's interest to do that, but based on the comments when this was brought up last time and based on the other property owners, they're not in favor of it. They don't, they don't necessarily want to see the rest of it abandoned. So-
But that's what I'm saying, is just this one little leg.
One leg is what there is that-
The up and down part here.
Have a consensus on.
If you decided to abandon the rest of it, you know, you could decide to abandon an old one, split it, sell it, do whatever.
So what's happening with that now? I mean, we're upkeeping that anyway, right? Or we're supposed to?
The only upkeep that we've done is cut, cut, or cut a tree down that was-
Oh, we're not cutting grass. Is there grass on there now?
People have, people have fences. There's a little shed back there. I mean, we're not really doing anything with it.
Do we have any comment from, I guess the only neighbor that, that I see that might be slightly affected would be the Jones track. Have we had any conversation with that family on that? Because that, yeah.
I have not talked to the Jones family. I've talked with-
What I don't want to get into, and I hate to refer this back to this because it's like an Eleventh Avenue issue. And so-
Tried to get in touch with all the property owners. I believe there were five property owners that were, that did meet. I do not know which ones other than the houses.
Have we got out two to the tune?
Yeah.
Bob's here. Could you ask, have you talked to the Jones?
I think Charlotte has.
Charlotte?
I've talked to the Joneses. The Joneses are not the only ones that are involved. There's Joneses, there's probably five or six other property on that little street that goes in the night.
Five.
For it covers and goes down through there.
There's six.
And there's some of them are for, some of them aren't.
Okay. All right, so-
On the one leg, it's-
We're just talking about the leg by your property.
We're only going to half of the alley, so it doesn't affect the Joneses.
Okay, that, yeah.
Yeah, you're only going on the other side of the, what is it? House?
The only, only, it only affects-
What's that name? Houses.
I was there.
But my, my only disagreement with that is it does affect the Joneses because, only because, the reason why you're doing this is so that you can subdivide that lot and you're adding property there, which then does have impact on the Joneses. And so I, you know, I think that they ought to have some, I think we ought to have some sort of conversation with them so that-
Won't be a surprise.
So it's won't be a surprise. Because, because we just can't get into the habit of doing it. Well, well, I understand that, but it should be nice to have somebody write it and tell us it's not going to be a surprise.
It ends right there at the end of the house.
Does it touch the, that little leg right there? Is it only going to the straight part of the, of the alley or is it going to go, will it touch the Joneses property?
With your mouse, highlight it with your mouse. Do you have a mouse?
It's not that it touches, it's that it allows them to subdivide.
Click on it and draw a line around it.
That's the change. That's how it impacts the Joneses.
It will touch that part.
It doesn't necessarily, but it creates the opportunity for the other property to subdivide, which is a change to the neighbors.
Click on it and draw, go straight down a little bit. Yeah, all the way down, stop. Now let go.
So, I mean, I mean, if, I'm, if the neighbors say, especially the Joneses-
Yep, right there. See it?
And your house, you're honestly okay.
It's highlighted.
But, but it does affect the Joneses' property. And so I, and if they're okay with that, that's fine. We just like to have a communication from them saying, we're fine with that. Because we don't want, as we said, we don't want a surprise. We, if you live there and all of a sudden, if you knew that there, that, you know, all of a sudden, the city did something so that you could subdivide your lot and I didn't know anything about it, I might, could be ticked off. And so, and we've had things like that happen before. We're, we're trying to avoid those as much as possible. So- Well, if they could write a little note to us and just say, that's fine, and present that with us, you know, I don't mind moving this forward. If we, if we have, Brian, if we have some little something that says, we're okay with that.
Can you take a look, take a look at that? See where she highlighted that?
They originally talked to them about this and they did not want their access to the alley before close.
Okay.
And that's why it's not closed all the way up to here. It's just closed to here so that they have full access. That was what they requested. Now, we don't have a note from them.
Okay, put a note. And I think they need to understand though, in that note, that they understand that this creates the opportunity for that, that piece of property to be subdivided. They need to know that.
They do know that because that was the whole schedule.
Okay, all right. That's all. I, it just, it just, it's cleaner. I don't want somebody, "I didn't know anything about this and you didn't tell us," and, you know.
We sent them a great good letter.
Well, just a little note that just says, "We're fine with that."
And see where that blue.
And is anybody comfortable with that? If we move that forward?
I think, I think.
If you get that too, it's by the, by the BOMA meeting, then, then we're all good.
Can't be involved.
And I do want to say, even though we were talking about the easement for the driveways and being in the right-of-way, those really are two different things, even though maybe technically the result would still be okay, but being in the city right-of-way as opposed to an easement through somebody else's property is different.
Is it, is different. I agree with that.
And see where the blue ends on the top there?
Yeah.
Into that, that other strip that, that goes straight across from the right to the left and then down, that's all.
That's all gonna stay, right?
Still city.
And see where that ends, that doesn't go into their.
I never said it did.
No, and I'm saying, I'm just saying, that's where it ends though, so it doesn't really go into that, right?
It's a paper intact, not a document.
Yeah, alright.
Brian, you got all that? You're good? Okay. Everybody else good? Alright, thank you. Item number 19. Um, no.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's right.
19.
Come on.
Okay, I was trying to find London Lane, I couldn't find it over there. Item number 19 is the review and discussion regarding London Lane and the unused city right-of-way recommendation framework. We've talked about this about 60 times. Maybe that's an exaggeration.
Last two times there. We deferred it.
But generally, generally speaking.
We deferred it. Last two times.
It's been deferred a bunch and, and so, so it's, we're back.
And he's here.
And we're at a point where the, the city is in favor and Lance is opposed and so we'll, let's start with that. You want to start with where we are in recommendations? You want to do that?
This is not, the city's not in favor.
We're in favor of continuing the existing.
That's right.
Right, that's what I meant.
Okay.
I said it in reverse.
We, or the city or the board?
We, we are the staff.
The staff.
Staff recommendation is to continue the existing.
What we did was this summer's different departments developed the policy framework for unused right-of-way and we took that and applied it to London Lane to see how it shook out. And four of the six criteria are in favor of keeping the right-of-way. And probably the most important one is, is keeping access to a parcel that would become landlocked if that right-of-way was taken away. And I guess the conservative approach that staff has is keeping it because it's addressing land and parcels, not particularly ownership. This one has, this one, there's same ownership with the two parcels, but we don't want to take a look at ownership, just address the parcels and the ability to access the parcel. Because ownership changes over time and land uses change over time, and so the recommendation is to keep it.
Could I say something about that? That piece of property, whenever that was subdivided, was listed as an unbuildable lot.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And that is what it's designated, an unbuildable lot.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
That is right. It is right.
That is.
So, it's not, I mean, you know, whenever you talk about landlocked property, then that kind of indicates that there, there is some, something where that, that is potential for, for development.
Something to develop, yeah.
But as it stands right now, and as I say, this, this was looked at whenever that other property was added to, can we say, and subdivided? And, and as I say, if you look back on that, it does say that this is designated as an unbuildable lot. So, in that sense, describing that as landlocked seems to me to be a little nitpicky.
Yeah.
Well, there's nothing, there's really nothing nitpicky about it. It's landlocked.
Well, but that's the reason.
That's just all it is.
Right now, it's not landlocked.
Right now, it's not.
No.
But if you abandon the right-of-way, if I'm reading that correctly, then it is landlocked unless you can come up with another easement.
Well, let me say to you. It could be through, it could be through something, something else. It's just, oh, it could be. I mean, the people that, that own, own the other property right next to it.
Yeah, if they, if they wanted to do something with that property.
If they want to build access to it, they could do it.
They sure could. They could go right through there.
Isn't that right?
Yeah, but let's only talk one of them.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
You have the four.
Okay, thank you. The, the owner of that property owns the adjacent, the, the property because that was subdivided. And if they wanted to get into that, they could build access through their piece of property. And that was said at the time, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
I think ownership is, it's still a separate parcel, so ownership can change over time.
Now, wait, it is a part of that plat, though. It is a part of that plat. It is not a separate piece of property in terms that that was, those were at least, at least two lots on one plat there. It may have been more than two lots, but it was at least two lots on that one plat.
Exactly. That's what we were going to talk about.
Is it landlocked, Gary?
Alexander owns it.
That lot was created as a buffer of all.
That's right.
There you go.
Agreement made of the property owners.
That's right.
So, landlocked?
If an agreement was, was going to be something like, would it still work?
It makes no difference to me.
It, when the agreement was made, is it on the, so it says it's an unbuildable lot, it's unbuildable because?
No, it just says it's an.
But I was gonna get back to the intent, though. It was, the intent was that it's, and it's on the plat and it shows, and I haven't seen the plat, but it's on the plat and it says it's unbuildable. Is it unbuildable because of, of basically agreements with the London Lane people that that wouldn't be built on to buffer the car dealership from that residential development?
I don't think it says the London Lane or the.
I know, but, but was that the intent? I mean.
Yes, it was.
Cause oftentimes, we kind of gotta go with intent sometimes.
You went back from the.
No, but.
It was screening, buffering.
That's right.
Yeah, when that was built, remember?
That's right.
That, Lance, you had that.
I guess that was one of the points that I was going to bring up, is that when. Hi, Lance Malashevsky.
Hi, Lance.
I'm from Royal Oaks Neighborhood, tip 212.
Really? I'm surprised at that.
But if we go back to when that subdivision was developed and approved, it was in the county, the right-of-way that exists there connected to 10.22 acres, that was residential property in the original design, okay? The original design predated Williamson Square and everything else, all the commercial development that has gone up around it, okay? When, for 30 years, that sat vacant and then Mr. Alexander purchased that property and came before the board and subdivided it, creating a 4.22 acre, really strange piece of property, that I guess was a buffer, but I have tried to, tried to interview different people about that meeting when it happened. And first of all, I, I moved into the neighborhood just about the same time that happened. I had no idea that there was a meeting went on, because the disclosure rules back then were totally different than what they are now. I can assure you that.
No, no, they were not back whenever that was developed. We had, we definitely had public, public meetings.
You didn't have to notify the people.
Yeah, you know, things have changed dramatically, is my point. The city, the city likes to have everybody involved, just like what happened with number 17 and 18 over here. You know, they want to get the approval of all the abutting property owners. Well, I can guarantee you with what's happened in my neighborhood, that if there's something that's gonna happen to the neighborhood, you see this place full, okay? Because the neighbors love our neighborhood the way that it is and they want to maintain it. I understand connectivity and all the rest of that stuff. But anyways, getting back to the point, there, there's a letter that exists. I, I have been told about it, I haven't physically seen it, but it was from Mr. Alexander's attorney to the neighbors that abutted, saying that, that land is gonna be unbuildable, leading them to believe that, that right-of-way would never be used, okay? Now then, two years ago, when we had that applicant with the Williamson Square issue and all of a sudden, the right-of-way became into play again, I mean, the neighborhood was just beside themselves, because they don't really know what to think. The city has never had any expense in maintaining that property. Both neighbors that abutted on either side, not to the rear, not the Alexanders, have maintained that property and use it and it's, you know, it's been part of the neighborhood since the beginning. So, to have, have that part of our neighborhood, which intended, the land that was next to it was intended to be a residential extension of our neighborhood, now have the ability to have a commercial connection, really has the neighborhood upset. There's other ways to get a new commercial connection from Royal Oaks Boulevard to that property in the rear, if there's just a little modification that would keep the commercial traffic, commercial and the residential traffic, residential. In addition, that road where London Lane is, where it's gonna connect, I was over there yesterday just taking some measurements and for 30 minutes, the traffic was just buzzing up and down that street and it's a little dangerous. So.
Okay.
And both property owners have agreed that, you know, you have a letter stating the intent that they would like to see it abandoned.
Thoughts or comments?
Have we developed the policy yet?
We're in the process.
Experimenting with policy is what you say it is. Here's a framework for you.
It's not, and that's all it is. The framework, it's, it, and, and these are, these are like two.
Individual.
Well, one is, do we want to abandon it or not? That's one thing. The other one is then, if we do abandon it, then how do we proceed? I mean, and, and, and so, I think the big question in this one is, not how do we proceed, but do we want to abandon it or not? And that's your number one question, because basically in this case, you probably divide it in half and just let, let them have it, would, if we agree that it needs to be abandoned. I don't know if we'd go about selling it or whatever, but not, not just my thought, but, you know, the question is, is do we want to abandon it or not? And we need to finally make an decision. We can't keep bringing this back up every, every four, five months.
I don't think you ever write a, a rule that applies to every piece of property.
No, no.
You're gonna have to look at each one uniquely.
No, and that's the point. That's what we're trying to do.
As things change, you know, the, the rights of the property for the city of Franklin and the right-of-way change with the new regulations and everything that goes along with it, whereas the residents that live there that understood or purchased under an original intent, intent, well, they're harmed by whatever happens.
Exactly. And, and the way that's situated now, where the dealership there is, you can come out to 96, there's multiple access points and there's access points back in around Curbers and then the back of that and.
But there's also potential.
There's a lot of potential to come out in, in multiple areas on 96 as well. So, it's not like they have one access only. They have multiple accesses.
Yeah, there is multiple.
And that would be a protection for your neighborhood to, for your neighbors to have that.
With all of the changes that have happened for access to our neighborhood, with Jordan Road being closed off, something's gonna have to happen at Jordan Road and Liberty Pike. The amount of traffic now that has increased from the apartments exiting up London Lane now, it's, I don't know what classification you would make that road, but I could tell you, if you did a traffic study, you'd probably find that we're probably ready for road widening and some sidewalks to keep the neighborhood safe.
We're gonna discuss that in just a minute, so you'll love that, the sidewalk policy.
Yeah.
You may not want that.
Yeah, but if you open, you're right Lance, though, if you did open that up and bring more traffic into that area, then they wouldn't have any sidewalks to walk yet and the road, the road is tight and then you take and funnel all that traffic down to Royal Oaks and that's a hard place to get out of.
We're gonna move it forward. Yeah, we're gonna move it forward, not on the consent agenda, on new business and we will vote on it the next work session. Next to Board Mayor Alderman.
Now, there are some fees, some costs that are incurred with, if, if you all decide to declare surplus, the survey and legal fees to.
Well, that needs to be added to the package, so we know what we're talking about.
And so, that's something that it's, maybe $5,000, but it's the staff policy framework that says that if they.
$5,000 for fees?
Yes.
The neighborhood only has to be treated fairly and in accordance with city policy.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that would be paid for by the person that's requesting the.
Correct. Alright, I think that's true.
I'm going with her.
Okay. Thank you, Lance. Good to see you. Alright, that was number 19. And so now, we're gonna go back to number four. Anybody have any comments on four? I don't think so. Item number five, discussion, review and discussion of the bid received.
Oh, well, yeah. I'm sorry, I was getting ahead of myself.
Good, good job.
Oh, yeah.
Vern is a little down on the back, so if he looks a little tentative moving, that's what it is.
You wanna borrow my pillow?
Review and discussion of bid received for surplus property consisting of the two institutional structures, the old jail and the old old jail, including the single parcel land, map and parcel number 63N-BO640, 6400 located at 112 and 118 Bridge Street. Mr. Gurr, if you want to.
Thank you.
Can you talk?
Yeah, good evening. First, I'd like to recognize Fred Menderman from the Battleground Brewery. He's here this evening and you may want to ask him some questions, but approximately a year ago, we declared this property surplus, the old jail and the old old jail. And recently, put the property out for bids, because the value of it is over 25,000, a little bit reminder of what the, how to vacate and abandon property. But we did, there, declare it surplus. We had several inquiries about the property, but only received the one bid from Mr. Menderman, which was included in your, in your packet. And the reason for that is, is a couple-fold, is because it is in the floodway fringe overlay that restricts certain types of uses and rebuilding of the property. And the other thing is that it's zoned civic institutional, which even further limits some of the uses. So, in what we've, while Mr. Menderman and the Battleground Brewery certainly have a, a good vision for the property, it would require some changes to both the floodway fringe overlay and to rezone the property. What we're recommending at this particular point in time is to deny this particular bid and to work on some of those changes, potentially coming back to the Planning Commission and Board of Mayor and Alderman, looking to rezone the property to a more adaptive, complementary use, similar to what Mr. Menderman and some of the other inquiries had. And then to also look a little bit more critically at the floodway fringe overlay to see how that affects the uses on that property. So, there's, there's two pieces, which as we know, would, would take several months, up to probably six months, to, to work through those. In the meantime, we do, we do and should have an obligation to maintain that property better than it is now. And Brad Wilson has, has looked at, one, demolishing the old jail, which would cost approximately, and these are just very rough numbers, about $50,000. And to basically whitewash, clean up the old old jail, put a new roof on it, would cost approximately $35,000. Money that we don't have budgeted. But if you've looked at that and looked at how many people frequent the Battleground Brewery, the nice shape that that's in, some of the other properties in the area, I would hope that we could at least move forward on cleaning up the old old jail, whether or not you want to demolish the old jail. Old jail would be a decision that you can make.
Fred, would you like to come up and say something? Fred, would you like to come up and say something?
Well, while all these coming up, the analysis then, we got a fifty thousand dollar bid, and we're proposing to spend eighty-five on it, reject the bid, and we're proposing to spend eighty-five on it, on, on a fifty thousand dollar bid.
And then rebid it at a, at a different, different time.
Hi Fred.
I'm there.
How are you?
I'm doing just fine. Brought a menu in case anyone's hungry later. This is happy hour. Fred Menderman, I'm president of Battleground Brewery. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. I've got General back there, Sam McGee, and our investor, one of my investors, Don Neff, who's principal engineer at Nissan. Just a real quick understanding of why people call me crazy. Eight years ago, I bought a hog farm in Arrington and started planting some grapevines, and now it's Arrington Vineyards. And that was before a big celebrity came into the picture. So everyone, including my wife, calls me crazy, but there is, I am a businessman. And being a businessman, there's two ways to look at this. My proposal is three letters, it's ROI. The plan proposal is RIP. And let me explain that real, real clearly. Rest in peace is to take an asset that all of us own as taxpayers and, and demolish it, and let it sit and wait for the value of that, that property to rise, and spend eighty-five thousand dollars. Mine is ROI, return on investment, where we take your eighty-five thousand dollars, if you want to spend that, and we renovate the old jail, which there were prisoners and other activities in there up through several years ago, and we start generating revenue off it immediately. I don't really necessarily have to purchase the land. I agree, as a taxpayer, that land is worth a lot more than fifty thousand dollars. But sitting as it is, the value of that property will not generate any tax revenue sitting on its own. And if we, right now, we have over twenty-five to thirty employees, we've been open since last December, and we're on track to be a, a very successful operation that we want to franchise in the future. We've paid for our brewing equipment, we need someplace to put it, we're not going to be a big Budweiser, our system is the same as Cool Springs Brewery. We feel that this development, this battleground village concept that I included there, would allow artists and musicians and craftspeople to share that building, which actually is, on a construction site, is actually quite a good, good structural building. I mean, the old jail cells are still in there. It's a very, very neat building. I was approached last week by a movie studio that wanted to do some filming in there for a, a movie. It has a lot of potential. And like the old, old, old jail that was built in nineteen oh five, that was renovated by, you know, a couple people five years ago, you can see what can develop and how that can be preserved. And I've spoke to the Heritage Foundation, and I just said, listen, I have no need for the old, old white jail. That's in disrepair, there's kids in there half the time, it's not safe, and I agree, something needs to be done to that. I have customers that come in that are afraid to even walk by there, they're not sure what's going to happen, let alone that maybe being haunted, I don't, I don't know. But it needs, it's an assor. And in May, when we, when we saw a river going through the back of our parking lot, and everyone else is getting paychecks and we weren't, we sat there and said, you know, should we even be here? This is, this is really not a good situation. But we crawled out of that and we survived, and we would like the opportunity, whether it's leasing or working with you, to look at this option. I was the only one that bid on it, only one that was crazy enough to bid on it. But I'd rather see that building retained and generating tax revenue and profit as a business and a village to attract tourists like Arrington Vineyards and like what we could do with the park next door, and walk over to Granger Park and Pilkington Park. It's in that badass bend of the Harpeth River. Behind us are toxic wastelands and future bicentennial park. And I know we're not slated to have that sidewalk renovated like Third or other places for a long time, and I don't know what the status is on bicentennial park, but we can bridge that gap. We're willing to do that. I'm sitting here as a customer, as a taxpayer. If you decide to, to demolish that building, I won't cry, I won't lose sleep, but if you decide you want to keep it and generate revenue and keep the revenue coming out of there, I'm willing to work with you and, and immediately start cleaning it up and getting it ready and rezone and the things we have to do. But I've got brewing equipment sitting in California ready to be shipped, and I've got to start brewing beer here pretty soon. So I appreciate the opportunity, everyone's been great in the government, and I'm just here to see if we could have something that could become really a great tourist attraction and bring people down on that side of the Harpeth, and eventually tie into the bicentennial park, which I think has huge, huge success. We have four hundred, over four hundred reenactors coming in a month from now, and the guy who heads up that whole group for the Battle of Franklin was in last night, and he asked if we could do something for the soldiers coming in to reenact. I said, absolutely, we'll set up tables outside, we'll do whatever we have to do. People like that old jailhouse. And I even have customers who said, I spent a night in that, that old jail. So I said, well, you never know, you might be able to go back in and have dinner in one of those cells one of these days. But I appreciate the time, I know we're kind of behind, but thank you again for the opportunity, and we'll work, if you want to save it and you want to do something, we're more than happy to work with y'all and Heritage Foundation.
But you have no interest in the white building?
No, I, I really don't. I think that should be, and Mary Pearson and I talked about it, we need to form some kind of a nonprofit or do something like with a theater, I mean, make it safe and whitewash it, and there's been designs by the Omar, you know, design studio for that, it's a great-looking building, but I have no use for that.
And I did talk to Mary about that, as a matter of fact, and she said even though their plate is pretty full with the theater and stuff, that they would be willing to help bring it back to some sort of condition with volunteers and with people that want to, you know, work, like they did on the Stone House, Doctor, whatever.
The German House.
The German House, the German hospital. And, and that she would, she would, could bring that to her board, and they would be, they, she, I mean, she can't commit at the moment, but that they would probably be interested in doing it. You know, it's really a tough decision, it's something that we've been looking at for a long time and really have scratched our heads with. So with regard to the, I had always heard that there was an issue with regard to having the brewery part in, in the old jail and, and you serving, that, that being on a separate location than where you're serving food. Now, I mean, that's kind of what I had been led to believe, is that still true or not true?
No, I confirm that. The, the law states, the state law states that in a county, if you produce beer, you can transport it to another facility in the county. You can't transport it outside the county. So Blackstone Brewery is now in the process of building a new microbrewery on Charlotte Avenue, and once they start brewing like Yazoo, they can deliver in Davidson County to their own restaurant on, you know, on West End. So I can provide Puckets and Leapers Fork and other people with Franklin's finest brews, and I can drive my truck over and deliver it, otherwise I need to go through Littman or a distributor to take it outside. So that, I did clarify.
But Vernon, as that property is currently zoned, he can't do that in that zone.
No, and that's the quandary that we really phrase with, with Fred and his timeframe. We would have to start by rezoning that property, and that would be about a, a six-month process. Now, if we, we rezoned it to some type of mixed use that allows for general retail and maybe a mixture of some residential, that's one discussion. But to take a look at a brewery that would be producing beer for distribution is, is yet another higher-level discussion that we would have to consider, and we could consider. The opportunity does exist, if you, if you so choose, to leave the old jail, and we can clean up the property, clean up the old old jail, as Fred has mentioned, and then work through the rezoning and see where all that falls out with the stakeholders in that particular area, the Downtown Association, the merchants, the Heritage Foundation, and see how that all could come together. But it does take time, and I, I've tried, we as staff have, have tried to articulate that to Fred, to make sure that he has the information his, he needs to keep his business interests viable.
Well, and, and I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, it, it sounds as if there's some possibilities for rezoning, and, and I could probably support a number of things there. I did have a concern, though, whenever it also stated amending the floodplain specifically for that, I, I, you know, just, just at my first, my first impression there is, no, I would not be in favor of doing anything in the floodplain, I mean, to, to change our floodplain regulations. If it's, if it's a matter of rezoning, obviously, I think we put the civic institutional there because we thought the city was going to kind of do something with it, or.
Well, it was, that's what it was, because it was a jail.
Right, right, right.
I mean, we brought it in based upon what its current usage was.
And so I, I would, I would certainly think that would continue to be a problem.
Can I make a suggestion? Even if we accepted it, we've got to go through rezoning, because you wouldn't pay for it if we couldn't put what you had in there, and so that doesn't make a whole lot of sense at this point in time. And, and I, and I think we needed to bring this to, to this discussion, so everybody's at least knows what's going on. My thought would be, let's sort of proceed with, I, I think we should reject this proposal, but I think we should proceed with some kind of rezoning, and maybe work with you about what you, what you can see that it's, you know, the usage is, and how we can get that done as a possibility, but maybe a broader scale. Let's, let's, don't tear the building down, and let, let me work with the Heritage Foundation to see if I can get something done that we can secure that from having a further damage, and then, and then let's analyze our position after, after we do that. Does that sound like a logical, so we, we can do that without any kind of board action or anything like that, I believe, other than reject, other than reject a bit. Does that, does that sound, I know that may not fit your schedule, but we couldn't fit your schedule anyway, I don't think, because of the zoning issue.
That's right.
Because that is an issue.
You know, I've been waiting a long, long time.
That's where those gray hairs came from, isn't it?
Absolutely, I started when I opened this place. But no, I, I'm perfectly fine with it, and, you know, business goes on, and we have to do what we need to do, and if we're available when you decide to do something.
I think that's correct. And we appreciate your work down there, and it's a great place, and, and you add to the community without question, so. And we enjoyed it, and we made the effort. Item number six, can you, can you extend happy hour? Item number six, consideration of terms and conditions, agreement with Standard and Poor's COF contract two oh ten dash oh one four five. And this is on the agenda tonight, voting session tonight.
Don't you wonder when people come to your meetings and say that they want to pay taxes? The rating agencies have started requiring a terms and conditions contract, and one that you have attached in this item is from Standard and Poor's. The state of Tennessee is currently negotiating with them about some of the language that's in there, and, and our city attorney is doing the same, and we're more or less waiting to see what the state position is on some of these items. But we would like to, because we have a bond issue coming up, we would like for you to go ahead and approve this terms and conditions contract, subject to review by the city attorney.
City attorney and city administrator sign off, so we both work through that. We have that happen sometimes. The primary issues are things like indemnification, they've got a venue in there for the state of Maryland, we need that to either be silent or say the state of Tennessee. These are, are pretty clear issues that need to be worked through, and so we know what they are, we just need to get it back from Standard and Poor's, and that's being worked through, we just don't have that directly in front of you today. And so when you act on it tonight, if you want to, we would suggest you make that qualification and provide that authority for us to sign off based on, you know, the, the contract as amended or as, as agreed to, and give us the authority in terms of the city attorney and myself to, to sign off on your behalf with those changes.
She made some changes on it.
You see the changes noted on what we sent you.
And we've sent to them.
And we've sent to them. That's what we anticipate this being, but we don't have that from the other party to put in front of you today.
And there may be further changes. And we wouldn't bring this to you in this forum, except timing is of the essence, you know, as soon as we can work this out, we need to have this signed so we can get our ratings, so we can issue the bonds, so the dominoes kind of fall.
And speaking of that, item number seven, consideration of Resolution two thousand ten dash sixty-eight, a resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed seventeen million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of the city of Franklin, Tennessee, to refund a portion of its outstanding general obligation public improvement bonds.
This is a pretty plain vanilla refunding issue, there's no new money involved in this. We have a fixed rate issue that we, was issued in two thousand and four by the Harlinsdale property. The markets are down, the yields in the market are down to such an extent that we can refund that now in advance of the normal refunding period and save a considerable amount of money. While we're out there doing that, and we're incurring the cost of bond counsel and our financial advisors, et cetera, we want to go ahead and also refund some of the variable rate bonds that we have outstanding. That's what brings the number up to the, to the approximately sixteen or seventeen million. The seventeen million is a not to exceed number, we think the actual final number will be about sixteen point three. There's no new money involved, and the savings is pretty considerable, it's a little less than two million dollars over a twelve-year period, which in net present value is about a million four in real money that we will save by doing this.
Our typical threshold is around three percent to start considering it. This hits up around eight percent when you look at the, the savings compared to the total here. So this is a good opportunity, also helps us convert some variable rate to fixed, which long-term we think is a good thing to do here, especially since there's another twelve years left on that variable issue, so we think that's good. Right now, it will actually have the short-term effect of raising the interest rate that we pay right now, because the, the variable rates are so low, but you look historically, to be able to get this rate and fix it is a good thing for us.
I just had one small question, whenever I look back at this again last night, sometimes it says V one, B one, but then whenever you get over here, it says B one, A one.
Yeah, this, they're, they're cleaning that up.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
This, this came from the bond counsel.
Right.
And the version that you have in your packet is about, the fifth version that we had, it's about a week old, but before we do the final sign off on this, in essence, this resolution is authorizing the mayor to do all the things necessary to make this refunding happen.
Right, but, but, but it does need to be.
It will be cleaned up.
Okay, good, good. Because whenever I went back and tried to, to match it with the things that you had sent for the, for the finance, budget, finance committee, I couldn't make it work, but, but I did find the two of them, there are two, there are really two, right?
Two issues.
Okay, any other questions? Item number.
Good, good.
Item number eight, review and discussion of Resolution two thousand ten dash sixty-nine, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the city of Franklin, accepting a new retirement plan for employees hired on or after, February fifteenth, two thousand and ten.
Basically, what we've done is translate into a resolution the recommendation we made at the end of our last meeting, when we presented the, the cost estimates and, and projected out the, the various options on the pension. This is what we're referring to as the conversion program, and would basically, again, take employees, new employees or those hired after February fifteenth, two thousand, two thousand ten, this does not affect our existing employees, they remain in the existing program. That's always our, our condition, that we always got to make sure everybody understands. But basically, we've taken this program and provided a unique opportunity for the employee to have choice in their retirement program. They can start off and, and have a, a one-time opportunity to convert over to a traditional pension program, should they so choose, at the vesting period, which is five years. So this, we think, is a positive, and will, will provide a flexibility that a lot of employers don't provide, but also helps us achieve the, the bottom-line goal, which was to reduce the city's overall exposure in the pension program. And we're doing, regardless of the choice that the employee makes, we're, we're clearly doing that here, because we're providing a five percent participation rate by the employee as a, as a minimum in this program. If they choose the defined contribution standpoint, they can contribute more, but we match them and contribute more as well. And that's an opportunity for them to take that approach. This is basically the existing pension program with a five percent participation, a five percent contribution from the employee. We did make a few modifications along the way that we think are good long-term adjustments, the biggest of which, of course, is the five percent contribution, but there's also a change in our averaging formula, which had been three years, we would like to convert that for, again, our new employees, to a five-year average. While that doesn't have a dramatic effect in the averages, we looked at it in the examples we showed you. we showed you last year, it quite frankly provides a little bit of a potential protection against what can happen at the end of a spiking or abnormal number of overtime hours or something like that. By adding five years, you provide more of a cushion.
Some more stability.
So, you average it out, and it stabilizes. It won't dramatically affect what that employee gets, but it does provide a little bit of a safeguard. We have also altered the, there was an early, there is an existing early retirement condition that is a, at age 60 and 20 years, retirement without any of essentially adjustment to that retirement formula, and we would like to eliminate that as well. That has some administrative headaches, as well as some cost exposure there as well.
So, will there be, there will be no early retirement?
There is early retirement, but it's essentially discounted by the number of years that that person retires early. So, you could retire, say, at 55, and there'd be, the amount of your retirement would be adjusted based on that age compared to?
Kind of like if you've got social security early. If you did social security early, then it's at a lower?
Yeah, but could you also not defer that? If you retired at 58 or 55 or whatever, couldn't you decide not to take it until that age? You can still do that?
That is the choice that you get.
Still do that?
You could get the pension right away, or you could wait till you're at the full retirement age.
And then take it, yeah.
Assuming you've met the other eligibility responsibilities.
Right, okay. Make sure it was still available.
That's really the primary summary of this. Again, folks come in and make an initial designation of whether they're going to be in the defined contribution or the traditional defined benefit program. At year five, which is vesting, they will make a choice as to what they want to do. If they want to continue in defined contribution, they can, or they can cross over or convert into the defined benefit. At that point, a calculation will be made based on the value of their retirement at that point. And so, then that will be, that will basically be the amount that they would be eligible for, they would have. So, even though they may have five years in, depending on how their investments performed, it may be only enough to be the equivalent of, say, four years, and that would be the basis of their retirement going forward.
And that's if they switch?
If they did the switch.
Right, right.
If they did the conversion. Any other elements we need to touch on?
I need to clarify one thing. It's not age 60 and 20 years, it's age 62.
62, I'm sorry. We'll need to adjust that.
I just want to make that.
Okay. Okay. 62 and 20.
Everything else?
62 and 20.
We'll need to make that amendment for next time. We'll fix that for when that comes before you, so.
This kind of appears to have picked some of the best aspects of all the options, and I fail to, I know whenever we talked about it, you talked about what the price to the city would be, and all of these are advantageous to us compared to the retirement plan as we have for existing employees. But, there are some opportunities there, too.
Yes.
There are some opportunities.
It's still a very competitive pension program, but it provides for that participation by the employee, and we think mechanisms also that help us control costs long-term. And one of the things we said going into this is that we wanted to make a fix that we think would last for a substantial period of time, that we wouldn't be back here in a year or two fixing this or fixing that. And so, that's why we made a few of the additional tweaks, if you will, to the program that we think were reasonable ones, and also ones when we looked at our competitors across the state, they were already doing that, too. The five-year averaging is very commonplace, and so we went ahead and did that as well, because we didn't want to keep changing it. It makes it harder administratively. You keep creating more and more different groups that were in different plans, essentially. So, we are, I guess, cautiously optimistic this is something that we can go with and stay with for a pretty long period of time before we're coming back and making adjustments.
There's just one concern I have about on the assumptions, you know, it wasn't an earnings rate of 6%, and that still may be a problem for us.
Be a wise.
May be a problem for us. But, otherwise, I think we picked probably the best, at least from what little I know about it. And I know the committee, the pensions and investment committee did look at this, and they did give it their...
They did not do a formal recommendation, but they've been participating along the way, and a lot of them have been at these meetings.
You presented it with these options.
Yeah. They've seen the information you've seen.
It's up to us to make the decision.
But, yeah, they're following your lead on this.
If we run this through our actuarial guy?
Yes.
That he's showed us what worst case could be.
And I have the bill.
But, now, that's some of the things.
Refer to the actuarial guy. Okay, let's move on to item number nine, if we can. Everybody all right with that? Okay. Item number nine, consideration of a subscription agreement with Ballard REIT, R-E-I-T, Inc., for management of certain assets of Franklin Pension Plan, recommended from the Pension Committee of August 26.
This, too, is on the voting meeting tonight. Two pension meetings ago, the committee voted to change the asset allocation to include a small allocation for a real estate manager. People were interviewed, and of the three finalists that were interviewed, this was the firm that was selected by the committee at the last meeting. We did have a short attendance at the last meeting, and we had a couple of people abstain because they had not seen all of the presentations, but of those that were at all the meetings, it was a unanimous vote, it was a three to zero vote to do that. This is kind of a long involved process to get this done. We need to approve it before we can get our trustee to start looking at the contract. We have Shawna looking at the contract as well, but to trigger all of the mechanisms that we need to move this along, we need for you to approve it, again, subject to approval by the city attorney, the council to the pension plan, and SunTrust.
And include the city administrator in that, too. That'd be good to have us all on that chain.
Yeah, I think you want to sign off on it.
Yeah, I'll have to. This will be similar to what we talked about on the Standard and Poor's. Should you so choose to take action on it tonight, please do provide that qualification in terms of the additional adjustments. We've got some comments late last week from the pension attorney that are still needing to be incorporated fully into this, and Shawna had a couple other adjustments that aren't reflective of what's in your packet. So, we've got to make a couple adjustments still, very similar, the same issues there in the Standard and Poor's contract as well.
And what this does is really diversify our portfolio and also add a little more stability to the level of return on it long-term.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Item number 10, consideration of 2009-10 Community-Based Development Organization, CBDO, agreement with Community Housing Partnership, an amount of $112,244 for the purpose of creating two affordable housing units. Who's purchased the renovation of existing, well, it's us granting that they would get the money to do that. There was a, we had three organizations that applied, and this is the recommendation of the Affordable Task Force. Any comments on that? Okay. And that is on the voting session tonight.
The program here is running out on us.
Item number 11, review and discussion regarding McEwen-Wilson Pike improvements.
This is really a follow-up to the discussion we had about the breezeway school development and reviewing the traffic studies and the work that we did in advance of the traffic studies. We wanted to identify for you what we think the top priority is in terms of a project, and really just get your direction to continue to move in that, move that forward, and maybe able to even provide you with a professional services agreement at the next meeting that talks about the design related to these improvements. And this is the largest price tag, and we think the most positive impact of the options that we looked at, and this is essentially improvements at McEwen, at Wilson Pike, essentially creating a turn lane there and replacing what is now a two-lane bridge with a three-lane bridge. And we would design this in such a manner that it's consistent with McEwen 4. So, we're really essentially starting a little segment of McEwen 4 by doing this.
Actually, there would be a new bridge and the old bridge would stay.
Okay. We'd add that on, Joe. Okay. I misstated that, sorry about that. So, we had asked, our rough estimate is that this is approximately a $2 million construction cost. As a general structure, we've looked at the $1 million that the schools offered in terms of going towards improvements, and then we've got the $1 million worth of the facilities' tax dollars that have come through the county to the city, that this would be an appropriate use of those dollars as well. And again, this is the improvement we felt had the greatest potential impact for helping that area, both in terms of serving the school, but serving the general public as they navigate that area, and will work very well with the signals that the schools are going to pay for and put in place at that intersection. The other piece to this, then, is that we would bring this forward to you for some more formal action, but we wanted to kind of follow right up on the heels of doing the agreement that we did at the last meeting with this being really the initial focal point of improvements, and this, we think, is the best option to look at. The other component of that is, too, this is much more of entirely a city responsibility. A lot of the other improvements take place on either a state or county road, and I think we need to continue to pursue partnerships in looking at those improvements, while this is much more of a direct city responsibility in terms of McEwen Road.
So, the new bridge is one lane, two?
No, three.
Why can't we do four? Isn't it short-sighted?
No, but he'll make it five lanes.
If you've got, if you're going to do three lanes, why can't you just do four?
Well, there's a short-sightedness, and then there's also a waste. I mean, you know, we could go out there and build 10 lanes now.
I know, you could, but...
I'm exaggerating, I know, but, I mean, we've looked at it, we've talked about it. You know, our thought is, it's 20-plus years before you really need four lanes out there. And even when you have four lanes, you can have a shared through and right, so you wouldn't need that extra lane. So, it really, I mean, by the time you actually need another lane, and what we want to do is, we want to set up the design so that you can take the wall, the parapet wall, off and widen the bridge. So, you wouldn't come back in 25 or 30 years and it's wasted.
And take that bridge down.
You would just widen.
Add on, okay.
So, yeah, we are trying to look at that one.
And that's the same approach on all of McEwen 4s, to sort of look at it as, how do you build what you need, but then be able to provide the additional capacity when that time comes?
Yeah, and I think that it's important that when we go to do McEwen 4, that we do obtain this right away and have that, and trust me, the people out there want this road so badly, and now with the school there, it gives it a whole new dimension, and I think looking at and trying to get the two lanes finished, done and finished as fast as possible is really important, but then obtaining that right away for those other two lanes when the time comes that's needed.
No, you got, because I have three.
Well...
Well, he's talking about somewhere.
Four is only...
Anytime we have, it's like Mack Hatcher. You know, you've got Mack Hatcher with two lanes right now, and the state bought right away for all four lanes. Of course, I mean, there's always possibility.
20 years, 20 years plus.
In the, at the intersections where they may need a little bit more, but what we would do, we would design all four lanes. I mean, that's what Phase 4 was. I mean, you would design all four lanes. Maybe you only build two now, but you would buy enough right away that when and if it's needed, you would have it.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, the right away and the design.
Yes.
And I want to say, we cannot necessarily build from what's eventually planned there on every single road. You know, I do think that it's a great idea to go ahead and get your right away and everything, but I mean, we do need to be realistic, because some roads we have planned for like four or five lane with a median and things like that, and we just, we may have to do the smaller part, and then, say, whenever the time comes or when we have more money, we can do the other.
Well, one thing I'll tell you, I mean, we don't have a professional services agreement. We haven't really developed the scope. We've looked at it, we've talked about it. We know that, I mean, that you've got bridge design, you've got dealing with CSX. Generally, I would say your design cost is somewhere going to be in the 15% to 20% range because you've got the bridge and those things. So, you're talking about $175,000, $180,000 for design, if it's a $2 million construction cost. But, we, but what we have looked at, has looked at, you know, trying to balance that not being short-sighted, but not building too much either. So, but I will tell you one good thing, everything that we do on McEwen likely will not require right away, because if you know what McEwen's like, the old road is over there, the right way is very wide there. So, where we possibly wouldn't ride away is turn lane on Wilson Pike.
Okay, the right turn.
Left turn, left turn. The northbound.
Are you talking about?
Northbound western.
Is there, from there, it's just railroad, though, isn't it?
Well, you probably have to scoot the road over a little bit to be able to, because you could not widen to the west because of railroad, so you would have to probably realize a little bit.
You're talking about heading east on McEwen?
I see what you're saying.
No.
No, north, north on Wilson Pike.
Or the left turn lane, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, all right.
Is it possible that we'd get these things done by school year next time?
No.
Bridge, with the bridge, no. And like I said, dealing with CSX, I mean, we've dealt with CSX. You know, this is a little bit different situation because we're going over rather than at grade crossing. But, just, I mean, just designing and constructing the bridge, I mean, you're talking about probably a minimum of two years if we started right now.
And we've got really two years from whenever the schools issue the bonds to use their $1 million, so.
That's going to go so fast.
Given the tail on this or the timeline that we think this will take, that's why we're talking about it today, to start this rolling and bring some things back to you.
And keep in mind, this was really not one of our top priorities at the time, the last time, whenever we set priorities, and it's probably going to have to move, isn't it, because we've got to look at the money. Well, a lot of it, for us, a lot of it is really there for what we need to do right now.
Right.
But, not all of it, if we're talking about another, you know, whatever, $200,000 for design and some other things like that, and we don't know how much this is going to cost. But, I do think it says to us that this needs to come up, you know?
Yeah, and sometimes what previously has been done without us voting on it, we inherit these things, and it should become top priority because developments happen, congestions happen, and then we get all these problems in those areas. But, then now we have, as you said, a school, and that changes the complexion of things. But, I would like to say one thing, and then, you know, I know it's going to be tough trying to work with the railroad, but whatever we need to do to move this along, because we know that they can sit and sit and sit and hold us up, and if we're talking maybe 18 months to two years, you could conceivably easily be talking four years, because we know what we've had to deal with before with the railroad, and we still don't even have a signal up where we need it.
They're not in the same situation.
I know, I know, but you're still dealing with the railroad, and they're notorious to...
Still dealing with the same railroad.
And they don't like to move fast.
Now, let me just interject, and we're going to need to move on for a minute, but in the last 45 days, I have reached out and developed a relationship with CSX Railroad, and we have had several discussions between CSX and T-DOT concerning the underpass, and actually tomorrow, I'm going to try to get it on the NPO list. But, they also, T-DOT has said that they would, if we request it, would do a safety update on that, which would be better signage and maybe some lighting and some other stuff in conjunction with CSX. So, we're having, we're having, and I've accused, not accused, I've stated to her several times that, you know, the rumor out there is that CSX is hard to work with, and she, she said she is doing her best to make sure that she could dispel some of those rumors. So, anyway, so I've got a relationship, name's Kate Cunningham, she's a good lady, she returns my phone calls.
Good.
And so, we're starting off that.
Thank you.
I want to go on record that the times that I've asked for their help, that they have, they've been very positive.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'm going to send it to you.
Yes, continue moving forward.
I'm calling you.
We'll try to have a... We'll try to have a proposal for you at the next work session.
All right, thank you. Item number 12, review and discussion of January 1st, 2011, 2% cost of living increase for the City of Franklin employees, and you got something in your box this afternoon.
Move on.
Yeah, move on.
Move it, move it.
Got it. All right, well, everybody out there, yay!
I'll say thank you on behalf of the employees.
Been a long time coming.
Wasn't there a song like that?
It would be 30 months better.
Review and approval of communication tower agreement between Clearwire Wireless and the City of Franklin for Phil Stone Farm.
What you have before you is an agreement that we've been working from the city standpoint with the law department, planning and parks, with the city administration, to use an existing light structure at Phil Stone and replace that light structure from the sports lining with an existing tower that Clearwire would place. It would also be a housing, it would, the sports line would be replaced on that tower, and therefore then additional vendors at some point may be able to utilize it as it would be brought back before the board for another different, a different contract. This would be a monthly rental, and would be ongoing for long-term up to 10 years.
Rental.
Rental for us, we would charge $2,000 a month.
Now, they tell us that the towers collapse, right, instead of fall.
I know the ball goes hard next to it.
Well, depends.
Fall zone.
I think they say that, they say they're supposed to collapse.
Are they a collapsible tower? I know we have one at Liberty. I don't know about that.
I think it's...
It is?
We'll look at the fall zone.
Gary, are you sure?
That's right, that's right.
So, is there a new one to be?
Yeah.
Good. That's what they tell us, right?
Where does Cylock's too?
Lisa, bring in that money.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We've been having some timing discussions. If there's no objection, we'd like to move 20 and 23 to the next work session.
Could we move them toward the front of the work session?
Be glad to do that.
Okay.
Because I think both of those are going to take some considerable discussion, and we don't have a lot of time. Okay, and we'll put those at the front of the work session. And we should make that a policy, if we move it back.
That's a good point.
We try to do that.
Thank you.
Do the LIFO policy, last discussed, first in, or something.
LIFO.
Item number 21, consideration ordinance and ordinance to men, Chitttown 21, Chapter 1, Section 21 of the Franklin Municipal Code for the Purpose of Establishing an Affordable Warforce Housing Advisory Commission. That's just doing what we did on both the battlefield and the sustainability commission. It's in your package, and we're going to kind of just make it official where they have ability to have, we know who the members are and how they're appointed and stuff like that. Item number 22, consideration of Contract 2010-118 for $174,254 between the City of Franklin and Community Housing Partnership of Williamson County for Administration Services Related to the CDBD Emergency Repair Program for the 2010-2011 program year, and I don't think you all know about that. So, having said that, we're going to adjourn and reconvene as soon as possible.